On the planning board recently.
Great, and anything else that?
I don't think so.
Good, okay. So next on our agenda is public comment, so we do have, obviously, people on, there's no one here in the room with us on this fine evening, but we do have people online. Peter, do you want to see if there's anyone for public comment tonight?
Sure, so there's one person with their hand up, and that would be Mr. Mark DeSoni. Mr. Mark DeSoni, can you please unmute yourself and introduce your name and address?
Hey, good evening, Mark DeSoni. I'm glad you got a standing room crowd there. Okay, I have one question, one curious question that's in my mind, and I ask to each of the city members, and it's an easy one. What's the, what's the goal for each member to put forth in this town, Ash? Does each member have a goal to shoot for as a city member?
Those are the types of things we handle at our retreats, Mark, but this is a time for public comment, so.
And the public comment would be, I can't comment onto a agenda item that's up, that's up and being talked about. But as in retreat, the town citizens usually don't go through this, but as, as a town citizen, they would like to know, I would like to know, what is the goal for the town?
The goal, what is the planning board's goal for the town?
You're each, you're each working with projects, and you go to different committees, that public forum, public forum meetings and stuff like that, and a retreat is basically never heard by the citizens, but only as the board themselves. So I'm asking this question to ask, what is the goal, so that citizens out in the public can see what the planning board is doing?
Yeah, I can appreciate that, but those are the things we cover at the retreats, which are open meeting for all residents, and our meetings are, the meeting minutes are online as well. If any members of the planning board do want to comment, they can, but they're certainly not obligated to.
I would, I would love to, because I just want to repeat, I did campaign to have the comprehensive plan, and we are in the process of that, so I would love to just make sure everyone's aware and that gets publicized and participates in that. And I guess a tag team along with that is to get more citizen engagement, to get people to realize how important really planning is, and it, we are, we're, everyone here is a citizen planner that's on the board, we are not trained planners, so the public can be involved as well. So thanks, Mark, for asking that question. Anyone else?
That, that, wait a second, that didn't completely answer it. I'll drop it after I, after I say something else, but it won't be, it won't be negative, it'll be something like a two-way street sort of thing. I would like to have more citizens understand what this town is looking forward to. One with the downtown project, two with the comprehensive plan, and three would be economically and citizens' growth, and how, how they're going to look at the planning board to be for all goals. That's it.
Thank you, Mark. At this current time, I see no other hands raised for the public comment.
All right, seeing no other hands for public comment, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the reinstatement review of Kevin Moat on the design review committee. I think we've all received, it's the second page in our binder, a letter from, from Kevin, which, which I asked him to provide describing his, his contributions to the design review committee and the things that he's interested in. So, and I also see on, I also see online various members of the design review committee. Kevin, since I know that you are on vacation and there, would you like to, and made an effort to take a break in your vacation, to, to log on, would you like to say anything?
Sorry, I was muted there. Sure, so I've, I've been part of the design review committee for, you know, a little over a year now, and I think I have, we've made some good progress in, in how we, you know, work with the planning board and, you know, the reports that we're putting together as a committee and providing to, to the planning board for review of, of projects, and I, I'd like to continue that process and see if we can further streamline it as we go forward. So I, I think, you know, thank you for, for hearing me today and, and the potential to be reinstated for the upcoming term.
Does anyone have any questions for Kevin or comments?
No, no questions. I, I just wanted to say that, that for what I've seen since Kevin and many others have joined, there, there has been a, a real progress, I feel, on the way the, the, the committee is, is working and the way we're collaborating, so I am very much in favor of reinstating him.
I would second that. Thank you, Kevin, for all the work you've put in. You definitely see a dramatic difference in the reports that come in, and it's so easy to read and understand the gist of it, so thank you for all the hard work.
You're very welcome.
I don't think there's a requirement for it, but I do see, you know, people want to comment, I'll open up for public comment. I see Hannah's, Hannah's hand up.
Hi, yes, I just want to say, in accordance with what's already been said, that Kevin has been an incredible asset to the committee and has helped us to really become more organized and, and more timely, and I just think that I personally so appreciate his contribution, and I would love to see him reinstated.
Thank you. Is that Kathy Rooney? Oh, Kathy Rooney, his hand is up. Sorry, I should let you do your job.
Yes, thank you, and I'm just going to echo what Hannah said so, put so well. Kevin's been a real asset, he's helped us get much better organized about how we present things to the planning board and the public, and we're hoping he gets reinstated, because his contributions have been great to the committee. Thank you.
Next up with their hand is Ujwala. Ujwala, please unmute yourself and present to the planning board.
Thank you, Peter. Hi, everyone. I agree with Hannah and Kathy. Kevin has been a really great help, and he's, you know, we are much better with him in, as a chair, vice chair, sorry, and hope you guys can reinstate him. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a, seeing no other hands raised, do I have any motions from the board?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to reinstate Kevin Moat to the design review committee.
And this would just, because we had noted, this would be a term for three years.
For three years, for, for the next three years.
Is there a second?
Second.
And a roll call vote?
Deepa Winkitai.
Marcelo Rona, aye.
Catherine Jersey, aye.
And Tricia Kendall, aye. Welcome, Kevin, to another three years.
Thank you very much.
And enjoy the rest of your vacation.
Yeah, thank you, I'm going to drop off the call, thanks very much, take care.
All right, back to my agenda. Next on our agenda, we have listed a joint meeting with the sustainability committee. I think we have several members of the sustainability committee on there, and this was, you know, kind of as we had room in our agenda, it was kind of a lucky last minute ad when I ran into Ash at the farmer's market last Saturday, and we had room in our agenda to begin, begin a discussion, obviously, of various topics that are in front of the sustainability committee. So with that, Ash, I'll just turn it over to you and what you want to go through this evening, and, and obviously, the members of your committee as well should feel free to raise your hand when there's, when they want to come in on the discussion.
Absolutely, thank you, and thanks, Trish, for, for both making the time, as well as running into me at the, at the farmer's market, because I'd been planning to reach out to you and had been procrastinating candidly. So the main objective was to really start a conversation with the planning board around various topics that we will have coming up, so part of this that I'd like to maybe flesh out is maybe a little bit of a ways of working on, you know, what's, what's the ideal way for the sustainability committee to coordinate with the, with the planning board on, on items that we will be pushing forward to achieve our net zero goals that have a direct interaction with the planning board, right? So for example, we, we right now, for this year, have prioritized two warrant articles, one of which didn't quite pass in the last town meeting, but we're hoping will pass in the next one, around adoption of the opt-in energy code, and a second one where we'd like to collaborate with you on pushing forward a tree bylaw, which, as I understand, it needs to be a zoning bylaw. Traditionally, the, the sustainability committee has been more of an ideation and an education-focused committee. We, we are just about learning how to be more effective when bylaws that actually matter come through, right? We've had a lot of aspirational warrant articles that we've been successful in getting through at town meeting, and certainly the town has had overall support for our sustainability goals, but the reality is that if we have to achieve those goals, the town has to actually take action that may not always be popular, may sometimes be uncomfortable, and certainly will require material change in the way we function if we have to tackle an issue like climate change. Over the long term, we, we have a published net zero plan, so I'd love to take time with the planning board to take you guys through, through what that plan looks like. We have a set of prioritized initiatives that span over multiple years. I know Matt on, on the, on the sustainability committee has previously worked with the design review committee and shared some of those outputs, we've also shared with the design review committee our thoughts around, you know, sustainability measures that should go into design, but we'd like to now maybe start formalizing, you know, our, our engagement with you, so that, one, we are not surprising you when we've got things that might be overlapping, but more importantly, that we are actually doing this in a very collaborative manner. That's my main intent today. The, the focus that I was planning to take on, once we get past the, you know, ways of working and maybe get your thoughts on, on how we ought to work together, is maybe use the, the opt-in energy code just as a, as a use case to try and, you know, wrestle through that a little bit, you know, collaborate on that a little bit, just to see how that works out. And what I do want to call out is that we're super open for feedback, we're looking to collaborate, we have, the only agenda we have is to achieve the net zero goal that, that the town's charged us with, with achieving. You know, we don't have any other vested agenda, so, so we'd really like to just find ways of working with you, following the processes that should be followed, and honestly, getting feedback from you where you feel, you know, some things might need to be tweaked or changed, and not suggesting we'll always, as a group, always agree, but, but, you know, I believe that the more we collaborate, that the stronger the output of that collaboration will be, and the stronger the, the results for the town would be. So that's just my upfront speech, I'll, I'll pause there, maybe take some comment.
Yeah, I think that, I mean, I think there's a, there's a good, we can be very optimistic about, I think, a strong relationship between the designer, between the planning board and the, and the sustainability committee, and the design review committee as well, frankly. I think partly because, you know, there are many of us who are in the design professions who have experience with sustainability, and so, and that's on the design review committee as well, and so there's a lot of expertise and knowledge and experience to bring to that, and, and also, I think, just, you know, a dedication to kind of getting these things done. I think the, we had, had, you know, Anna was kind of a member of the sustainability committee, going to those meetings, obviously, now she's getting pretty booked up, if not overbooked, with the comprehensive plan.
Yeah.
And so, and so that's something maybe we need to relook at, to, to find either another member or a more regular updating between the sustainability committee and the planning board to, and, and the design review committee to kind of make sure we're, that we can have these ongoing discussions, and, and like you said, not necessarily agree, but find, find the common ground that we want to find, things that we all believe in, so that we can, we can push forward on those.
Couldn't agree with you more, Trish. I, I think when we had more engagement with Anna, we certainly were finding the lines of communication being far more open, and I do believe that, you know, having either a dedicated member of the sustainability committee attend, you know, your meetings, or having a member from either the, 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 the planning board or, or the design review committee, or both for that matter, whatever makes sense, participate more actively with us, makes a lot of sense, and it doesn't necessarily mean that all of us have to attend every single meeting, because I'm conscious of the fact that we all have, you know, day jobs and, and other priorities, and a number of us do, do serve on multiple engagements, so, you know, just finding the, the right path, but that way at least there's someone who's conversant with what each of the, the groups is doing, and, and just allows for that additional level of coordination between, between the three, three groups.
Are you wanting to, or are you wanting to give an update about the, because the two things we mentioned was the, the opt-in code and the tree bylaw? Did you want to give an update, or what's happened in the last?
Yeah, so, so let me just pull up the, the opt-in code, I'm not quite ready for the tree bylaw, you know, except to say that there has been a group that's been working on the tree bylaw. This has been a multi-year effort where I think we've got the outlines of things that, of goals people agree on, but, but there's a, a level of detail that still needs to be worked out, so I'm not quite prepared for that part of the conversation.
And Ash, just, just, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but there might be, it might be good at, for just a few minutes, it can be before or after, but just kind of giving a, a base description of what that's about, because I'm not sure everyone on the board was present the last time we discussed the tree bylaw.
Yeah.
It's been a little while, and so I want to make sure they're, at least knowing what you're talking about.
Totally, and, 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 you know, honestly, I'm going to give you a very high-level view of it right now, you know, I have older material, but, but to be candid, I, I spent more time really planning out this conversation to be around the, the opt-in code, because I'm personally more conversant with it. But, but at the highest level, right, the, the intent of the bylaw is to minimize tree loss, right? So from a sustainability perspective, you know, our goal is to maintain tree cover, and maintain tree cover in a practical, logical way, right? So we're not suggesting that, you know, we stop development, but where we do need to take trees, minimize that loss of trees, especially clear-cutting of, of established wooded land, right? So, so habitat protection is, is a really big part of this, and where we do do development and need to take trees, so let's say if, if the project just requires it, finding logical ways to then offset that, that, that tree loss, that tree cover loss, right, I, through, through either a tree fund or replanting of, of trees, right, and giving developers the choice. I don't have the detail today, but that's the intent, and Margie, I think you're on, and Matt, you're on, so please correct me if I'm not framing this correctly, but at least the broad framing, if you want to jump in, please.
I think you framed it very well.
Perfect. So maybe in our subsequent session, Trish, we can actually spend some time on the tree bylaw, but if it's okay with you, I just wanted to maybe wrestle with, with the, with the specialized opt-in code.
Yeah, that's fine, I, I just wanted to make sure that, like I said, that we're all aware that there's.
Did that help, though? Did I answer your question?
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah, please.
So, the tree bylaw, I, I'm very interested in that, and partly because I know there's been probably a couple of years' worth of hard work, and not to say we passed things because of hard work, that's not my point, my point is that, I want, I guess the question is, are we trying for fall town meeting, or what's your timeline? And particularly if it's fall, like, I think on the publicity and education and community stuff, probably we definitely have to think about.
Yeah, and my goal is, and maybe I'm being over-optimistic, in my goal is to get it out there for fall, so for fall town meeting, I would like to go after both the adoption of the specialized opt-in code and the tree bylaw, and part of my intent today was to get your feedback on what kind of forums we ought to be holding for it, right? We have in the past, so I'll, I'll be candid with you, the sustainability committee on its own in the past has tried to do widespread town-wide forums. The last time we did it was, was around the stretch, opt-in stretch code, on the opt-in code, it was part of a sustainable home seminar, as well as conversations that we were having on, at farmer's markets, as well as, you know, events that we were having, and then, you know, obviously Zoom meetings that we had promoted, but our reach is limited, is relatively limited, so for each one of those forums, especially the, the open forum that we held, I think Mark was the only one who frankly joined us, Mark's consistent in, in his support for us, but, but that was it, and he had actually been part of our meetings in the past, so it really wasn't a very effective outreach on our part, and, and maybe it's, we're not just very good at marketing ourselves, or maybe it is that, that our outreach is just not that, that great, but, but, you know, if we have to succeed on this, I'd, I'd love to kind of get your feedback, be able to leverage, you know, one of the misses, I think, Trish, you pointed this out to me, I probably should have early on started engaging, and that's really the intent today as well, right? Going to each of the boards that are going to be, be leveraging, and, and like I said, call it a newbie error, right? You know, I'm, I'm just trying to learn as well.
Yeah, I think, and Peter will have to correct me if I'm wrong here, but I can't remember what, what month we met with Margie and Matt last year, I believe it was, it was later than this, but as we were approaching town meeting, there's just a certain, you know, certain meetings and deadlines that have to be met that are kind of not bendable, right? And so I would, I think for both of these, I mean, the tree bylaw has to come through planning board, is that right?
Correct, the tree bylaw has to go through a planning board, public hearing.
With opt-in would not.
And the opt-in would not, that's a general bylaw, but yes, the tree bylaw would have to come through the planning board, and it would have to have a public hearing by the planning board. Looking at the dates, typically I would, you know, at a minimum, you know, for, for such a bylaw of, of the magnitude of a tree bylaw, you know, I would give, you know, three to four months, you know, of process to, to lead up to town meeting, I would say.
So I think that's, I, if it was fall, that maybe we can help with the schedule, and I think just, Ash, what you're pointing out, like, if, maybe we can have, we've had a placeholder for sustainability, but like, I, more people than you think watch our meetings maybe after, they can't make this time, right? So it's like, it's tree bylaw, it's opt-in, please contact us, right? If that's, I'm willing to dedicate the time of planning board to let you say that, if, but also helping with a real schedule of when and if, and I can't speak for the board if they want, we have to be engaged about the process if it's brought to us, I don't know how much support, but I personally, I mean enthusiastic about, about that, so I, I think we have to help you with the timeline.
Yeah, and that's why, like I said, we, we met with Matt and Margie last year about the tree bylaw, and time, there, there wasn't enough time before, I believe it was fall town meeting, right? There wasn't enough time before town meeting, do you remember? I don't know if Margie remembers.
Madam, Margie, I think you're both on the call, so, so maybe you can.
Yeah, or I don't remember if it, or was it February that we talked, I can't remember, but I knew there wasn't enough time when we looked at it to actually get the bylaw written, discussed, reviewed, on the warrant, forum, like, the process, so I, I would, I would just suggest a meeting with Peter to really go through that, that calendar and understand, so then really understand the deadlines that have to be made that are out of, even out of the planning board's control. We can find room on our agenda, but we can't change the calendar.
I understand, yeah.
Okay.
So, so what I'm noting down is, Peter, maybe me following up with you, to, to work through the schedule?
I would, I would happy, I would be happy to, and I would just make one point, that, you know, I think the planning board, you know, as a dense bylaw as a tree bylaw could be, right, with a lot of questions and, you know, it, some, you know, you know, authority, jurisdiction, is there going to be fines? You know, there, there's a lot of questions that have to be asked, right? So it is a dense bylaw, right? And so during the creation of this bylaw, right, if the planning board is involved, some of those kind of question marks get worked out, right? Those, those wrinkles get ironed out.
Sure.
However, if, if it comes in front of the planning board without being kind of conversed upon, right, and or kind of decided upon with the sustainability committee and the planning board, I think that's when we get, could get into that, that, you know, hearing process that would kind of, is, is just not, never-ending, but it gets kicked down the road from one hearing to another, and I think that's the opportunity where you run out of time, right? And, and that is an element that I just want to kind of bring to the, bring to the table.
Yeah, I, I agree, and that, and that's where my concern is, that, to me, a bylaw, looking, remembering our bylaws for the downtown zoning, that it wasn't one meeting or two meetings, it was multiple meetings with questions and revisions, and, and, and so we meet twice a month, and so, and as of our first meeting in August, we do have three public hearings listed, so our, our agenda may not be as open as it is right now, so I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there to, if, if you're looking at fall town meeting, that, that's, to meet with Peter.
Yeah, so, so I'll be also candid, right? We've been, I think there have been multiple iterations of the tree bylaw, right? And that there are a couple of versions that, that have gone through, you know, town council, I think we've had engagement from Becker, from other people, we've been taking feedback, but there are big, open questions for us as well, and one of our challenges is, again, we are not experts in the field, right? So we're making our best attempt, so I'm genuinely looking for feedback on how to improve this thing, to make it actually something that the planning board will be able to implement, or as a tree warden, Becker is able to implement, and not land up with, with a, with a piece of legislation that is, you know, unimplementable. We already have a version of a tree bylaw on the books that is, you know, kind of hard to, to, to leverage, even in its current form. So, so I think we have a lot of language around intent and goals and value, but the actual meat of the bylaw around the pieces that will work, I think we have ideas, and we'd love to kind of get, Peter, to your point, right, a conversation on that, to say, let's start working through these things piece by piece, right, so that we can actually answer those questions and actually put them down on paper, rather than just have it more of a theoretical, you know, aspiration. And so, is there a methodology that you guys follow where, you know, a smaller group can maybe wrestle with a lot of the detail and then bring that detail back to, to a formal forum, or do we need to really do this process in all of your public meetings? Like, what's the right way to do this? For it to be efficient as well as effective, while not, while not losing open meeting law rules, or, or, you know, not trying to hide anything, I'm just trying to kind of get something effective out there, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I'm not sure there's a way, it's always been done in the past, at least not, not that I'm familiar with in my time on the board, and I would also, so I, I think it could be a kind of subcommittee, and in doing that, I would actually encourage, the design review committee especially has two people very familiar with landscape architecture, they have an expertise there that even the planning board doesn't have, so that might be a component of, of a voice that would be good to be heard as, as well, so.
I agree, you know, I think having a subcommittee could be the right position, you know, have, and, and have that subcommittee meet to kind of work through some of the hot top, the, I'm going to say hot items, right?
But Peter, we're having a little hard time hearing you.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I think having a subcommittee is, is appropriate, you know, I think there's two ways to do this, I think, yes, you could do it at a public, a public meeting such as the planning board, and you could kind of work through as, as a large group, some of these hot items, right, these hot topics, and I think it's also appropriate to have a subcommittee, and, and try to work some of these, you know, through, through some of these issues, because I know, again, you know, breast diameter of a tree, what comes into jurisdiction, you know, all those elements need to be kind of nailed, you know, need to be kind of decided upon, right? Before you come to the planning board meeting, you know, uh, and or planning board public hearing into town meeting, you know, those are the things that you really want to kind of make decisions on collaboratively.
Yeah. So I guess we could do it a lot of ways, I guess, uh, given this forum we are collaborating right now. Would we want to go down the subcommittee route, or would we want to do it as public hearings? I, I guess I don't know my answer yet. Um, I, I, I agree, we could go either way, but, but is there a preference or a recommendation?
Marcella?
Yeah, uh, well, my, my, I, I was listening carefully to what everybody's saying, and I think this is, that, uh, I, I, I am also very much concerned about the, the subject. I, I think going off of what Peter said, there, there is a, there is an important part of bringing a bylaw to vote, and maybe that's something that happened with this other bylaw that Ash referred to, that just comes to the meeting and it gets voted down. So I, I think what's important is to ask why, and I think a, a bylaw that could be dense, that could be, that could have implications on everybody's property in the town, is going to have a lot of questions. And I don't think that, I, I, I think having a committee working some, some, some technical issues or something is perfectly fine. But I, I, I think that will not be successful unless it's through, through open meetings and through the entire community, being able to come, complain, say, I don't like this, I like that, and, and really negotiate something that is agreeable. And then when it comes to a vote, then people are aware, have participated, is not something that, oh, here's a new bylaw, we're going to vote on it, yes or no? It's not going to work. Uh, so I, I think that the, the collaboration that we talked about earlier, and, and I think Ash referred to it, uh, I think having, uh, beyond the tree bylaw, having, having a much more interaction, more consistent interaction between the boards is really the way to go for, for all the subjects. Uh, for this one, I think it, the community would really needs to be fully involved, or it's not going to be successful.
So, so here's what I'm going to propose, uh, maybe as a starting point, right? Uh, we can spend some time on the opt-in code because that's, believe it or not, a little bit simpler because we don't necessarily have to do, uh, quite the same level of editing. I'm, I'm not suggesting that it doesn't acquire the same kind of public discussion, it absolutely does, clearly does, and it does impact a lot. But there's less authoring, comparatively less authoring that we need to do with the opt-in code. Um, but we do have a, a very draft version of the tree bylaw that I'm, I'd be happy to circulate as a starting point so that we can have a rich discussion on it, it can be published on, you know, as part of the agenda, um, you know, and, and, you know, Peter, maybe I can work with you on when, when it makes sense, uh, from a timing perspective and your agenda perspective for us to bring that, and maybe we, we dedicate some time just talking through it. And, and really looking at it realistically and saying, okay, these pieces are done, here are the pieces that need more work, and then figuring out how we kind of get that, those, those specific pieces maybe, uh, uh, answered, or at least have one or two recommendations that we can bring forward so that some decision-making can happen. Would, would that, would that make sense?
I, I think that might make sense because I think it, maybe it combines a few things because I think the concern is, one is getting to that level of a draft, like, you know, that we have something that we can actually talk about.
Yeah.
And the other one is to making sure everyone has a voice in that draft on the board. So if, but if it seems like if Peter can send us, whatever draft you want us to look at, if Peter can send that draft, this could go to the planning board and the Design Review Committee, and we would all send our comments back to Peter, so it's not, we're not sharing them.
Can I ask something, Trish?
Yeah, please.
Um, it, it, it would be good to, if, if it's a draft of some work that has been developed before, it would be great to have an executive summary of some type of abstract of the big picture goal of this, because it's easy, it's easier for everybody to understand, us included, but everybody in, in, through the open meeting to say, okay, this bylaw is intending to do these four big ideas. And, and then you get into the minutia and just get the, how, how to, the technical parts of to achieving it. But I think the community needs to hear the big picture first, and it's much easier to dive into the, the details.
I, I, I agree. So, so we have, like I said, there has been work put in, so I would, I would hate to kind of just throw all of that out, right? Uh, I, I don't think that's useful, but we, we do have a starting point of view, right? And, and that's not to say it's final, it, it, it is, call it, call it a pre-pre draft, a, a, a suggestion, right? Of, here's, here's some language that we've, you know, taken some feedback on, put some thought on. And Peter, maybe I can start with, maybe sharing that for you, with you, and, and, uh, you know, one of us can maybe do a quick executive summary of that, that can then kickstart this process. We could work through sort of the, the, the basics, a- and then highlight also the areas where we really don't have the content nailed down or, or even recommendations proposed, right? I think for all of those things, we have some recommendations, but there's a, a lot of discussion required on what things would make sense, right? So we have less of a, of a firmer point of view on, on some of those things. So we can highlight those, and then, uh, then, then we can at least kickstart that conversation. So I think we can take a crack at it as a starting point, just to get this process started, and then we'll, we'll work through it.
I have one quick comment to add, it's basically what you're saying, but, um, I think to speed it up, it's those areas of, you know, there's either disagreement or need, like specifically, and when you've already had option A, B, and C, maybe we'll come up with D collectively, but I think, I think that's going to be really helpful to push it along, so we're not starting at zero. So if you have an executive summary, what we think are the hot things to decide, challenges, and what you have, a nice packet, give us a deadline, and keep it moving.
Yep, and, and then we can have a little bit of a come to Jesus on that, right? Uh, get everybody on the same page more so than anything else, right? Here's the work so far, are we all sort of aligned on this? Yes, okay, or no, these are the pieces we're still not aligned on, and, and then just move our work, we work forward on the things that, that really need discussion. I think I got it. Um, so let me take, let me take the action to maybe take a first crack at it, Margie and Matt have been doing a lot of the work, so I'll, I'll, we, from the Sustainability Committee, take a first crack at, here's what we already have. And then we'll, we'll send that to you, Peter, and then we can start working the process from there.
I think that's a great idea.
Awesome. All right. Uh, do I have some more time to then spend some, something? Let's take a crack because I do have a little bit of an executive summary on this, on the opt-in code. Uh, so, so we can, we can at least start that discussion if that's okay with you guys? Yes?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
All right, perfect, all right. Uh, you can see my screen, I, I know my screen's been up for a bit. Uh, I, I did put it up because I kept seeing my face, and it's a little distracting to talk to yourself. Uh, but, you know, for the, for the code, some of these slides I presented at, um, at town meeting as well, but this is a little bit more of a detailed, um, summary of, 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 of the problem statement, right? So just to lay, lay things sort of down, just to make sure that everybody's sort of on the same page, that Massachusetts now has three levels of building energy code, right? And the, the base code doesn't apply to us, right? It's, it's, it's been upgraded, but we can pretty much ignore it because we are already a green community. And so the stretch code, that's the middle column here, is what applies to us, right? And the, and the stretch code already has a, a set of updates that have happened as of Jan 2023, and there's a nu- nu ones coming out in July. Uh, and I think, Trish, to commentary that you shared with me, right, this in and of itself is a little bit confusing. The main, main sort of component of the stretch code, and I've got more detail on it, is shifting the way that energy, uh, usage is measured towards a HERS rating. Um, that's what Massachusetts is adopting. And then there's a layer on top of that called the specialized code, uh, which is effectively the opt-in code, that is aimed at getting Massachusetts towards net zero by 2050. Uh, personally, from a Sustainability Committee perspective, we believe that it falls far, far short of that, of that goal, but it's still better than nothing. Um, so what I'll try and do is at least try and lay those out, right? And again, my next slide is just another pictorial that basically says, hey, we've got an updated base code that then has the stretch code and then the opt-in code. And given the fact that our starting point is the updated stretch code, any discussion that, that we need to have is really, how is the opt-in code really different from the stretch code? Because the stretch code already applies, that's baseline for us. Is that fair? And I'll, I'll just keep asking the question so that, you know, everybody's just following. So far, so good?
Yeah, we're good.
All right, cool. All right, so the reason why we wanted to make sure, why we are spending time on this is when we did, uh, the greenhouse gas inventory for Ashland, when we were trying to develop the 2040, uh, plan for Ashland for net zero, building energy, the combination of commercial and residential buildings make up the vast majority, right? So we've got two major contributors to greenhouse gas emissions in Ashland, and this is pretty common for towns in the Metro West area, towns that are like us. The biggest com- component comes from residential and commercial heating and cooling primarily, right? That's, that's the biggest bit, uh, and then there's transportation, right? So part of our net zero 2040 plan really has us goals there that say that any new construction really needs to start moving towards electric, electricity as its primary source of energy. Um, and the reason for that is that electricity is the only supply that can go fossil fuel free, right? Obviously, if you're burning natural gas or you're burning oil, y- you cannot go net zero because it's, it's not going to be fossil fuel free, right? But electricity is the only thing that can. Does that mean that our entire grid today is fossil fuel free? No, it isn't, but the expectation is that that energy source will become fossil fuel free. So by ensuring that our buildings have the ability to switch to purely electric power and have some language in our codes that effectively push builders towards making electricity the primary way of, uh, heating and cooling our houses, we're effectively not building houses and buildings that are, you know, going to be regressive to our goals, right? So if you're going to build something today, it's going to live here for the next 50 to 60 years, we may as well build it so that it's electric-based, uh, so that as electricity, uh, is, electricity supply moves to, to, to fossil fuel sources, uh, free sources, you know, we effectively are achieving a goal for, for buildings, right? So that's, that's our primary reason, right? And the, the, the stretch code, so just kind of what's in the code, right? So, so the main components that are part of the specialized code, and I've tried to summarize this, I have to admit, I'll say this upfront, the way the opt-in code is written is confusing. It does build on top of the stretch code, which is confusing in and of itself, and Trish, you're absolutely right when you brought that up at town meeting. Uh, you know, there are, there are places where there is a lack of clarity. So I've tried my best to try and summarize sort of what I understand of it, right? So first is, the biggest sort of thing out there is pre-wiring, buildings using fossil fuels. So, so let's, uh, also, sorry, I'll take a step back. The opt-in code does not ban the use of fossil fuels. It simply requires that the buildings that are built are electricity-ready and does give preferential treatment to buildings that are all-electric, right? So pre-wiring is a requirement, buildings using fossil fuel must pre-vire for future electrification so that the people can switch over. And this is based on, I think, common sense that building a new house, it's much easier to put this stuff in than trying to retrofit an existing house. So, you know, if you're in that process, let's put the, let's put the wiring in. Um, buildings mu- using solar P, uh, using fossil fuels, this, this is where the additional sort of augment is that there is a requirement for solar PV users, so, so for, for solar panels or solar fuel, for rooftop solar, to be there for buildings that are using fossil fuels. And again, the goal here is to reduce fossil fuel usage and switch towards, um, um, to, towards electricity. Electric-only buildings do not have the same requirement, right? And then the, the focus is, the primary focus of the opt-in code is to really hike up the energy efficiency of new houses. So especially for larger houses, they must be certified either zero energy or zero or five zero, right? Um, so passive house, uh, standards must be followed, and same thing for multifamilies, right? Must also use the passive house pathway. And then, uh, there is a jump, right? So, so here's something that we, you know, we, it, it's going to be a, a little bit different for us, is that in Jan of next year, so at the beginning of next year, there will automatically be a jump up in the stretch code, not the opt-in code, but the base stretch code that we follow, right? There's al- already going to be a jump up in a requirement for those HERS ratings to go up, which will almost match up what we get in the opt-in code, right? The difference there is that the electrification, pre-wiring, that stuff is not there, but, but the energy ratings that are required are going to be sort of built into the stretch code itself. So whether we do something or not, the, the energy efficiency requirements are going to be pushed in anyway. What we miss out on is the pre-wiring requirements, right, for, for these houses. Again, I'm, I'm trying my best, but, but did that make sense as well?
You know, I get the, the general, um, requirements of the opt-in code, I think the questions become more detailed than this. I wish I would have brought my code book because I have it all.
I, I actually have, uh, a slide here, I, I try to, you know, so, so let me see if this helps, if it doesn't, it doesn't.
And do you have, and do you have a document with the mass amendments to the residential code? Because.
This, sorry, so this was sort of my cheat sheet, um, where it got into HERS rating and all that, I don't know if this is what you're looking for, and I, I have lots of other content. But, but again, I'm trying to summarize this, uh, for, for public consumption, it's a little hard topic.
I'm sorry, was that a question for me?
I, I'm, is this helpful, I guess that's the question.
It's, it's helpful, I'm, I'm, I think, I think we might need to, um, I, I don't know, I guess I'm, I'm, it's a question for the board, I mean, I've been reading this a lot lately and trying to get my head around this. I've attended several seminars, both in the residential part of this, which I, is what I do, low-rise residential, um, single-family homes, but also in the commercial part to try to get a handle on that. Um, and, um, and I'm not sure the summaries answer my questions about how this would affect Ashland. Cause on your first slide, you showed the three, base code, stretch code, opt-in code, and you had a line at the bottom that this affects all new construction or major renovations. So, um, and I'm still trying.
Major renovation, I will admit to you, that, that, that one line is confusing, that's my, that's my reading.
Yeah, it's very confusing, and so when I start to think about Ashland, and this, and this is where the, where I'm trying to understand it, and I think you've had, I, I, I think you've met with Doug too, to try to kind of get a handle on this.
Yeah.
There's one thing about new construction, 100 Chestnut Street, 501 Pond Street, which we have dealt with and requ- required all-electric, at least on all the residential components is all-electric. They have solar panels that need to go up in two to three years. Um, so we've met,
Yeah.
You know, we met a lot of these, right? And that's new construction, that's kind of completely new, so it's kind of easier to get a handle on. But my questions stem around, like, we have, also have a lot of existing buildings in Ashland, which in terms of sustainability would be a good idea to reuse if, you know, if, if the case comes up, right? But as I'm finding in my own work in single-family homes, man, those renovation projects, when it tips over that 50% mark, is tricky, right? Um, and so that's what I'm wondering about, like, one part of it almost seems easier because we're already doing it in, in effect, or pretty close to it, I think, not going through the details. But it's the things that are, it's the things that are le- less hard to understand that I'm trying to understand and where my feeling of unease and not understanding it comes from. So that's what I'm trying to, it's not about the different pathways, because those are complicated to understand, and they'll get a consultant to help them with those various pathways. But trying to understand if a building, if someone purchases a building in Ashland and wants to bring a business here and is trying to renovate it and reuse a building, how hard or impossible, because some of these projects out there now, um, at least in terms of the residential scale, have tipped to the impossible, right? Um, does this make things? And that's kind of the realistic, um, that's kind of the realistic version I'm trying to understand that I'm grappling with. And it's tricky because it's not readily apparent in the code, it's, it's hard to figure out.
Yeah, I, I, I think Matt, Matt has a question, so before I respond, I'll.
Oh, please, Matt.
It's okay with you, yeah, Matt has a, yeah, go for it, Matt.
Uh, yeah, I was just going to note, um, from the guidance I've seen on the DO ER site, I think, uh, the opt-in code does not, not apply to renovations. Um, there may be certain commercial renovations which would apply, but for.
Residential.
Most residential, I don't, I don't think it would apply.
It's the stretch code that actually applies to the renovations, but I think we need a slightly firm answer on that, right? Matt, or, or do you have?
Yeah.
Something that, that you can direct. Matt, or, or do you have something that, that you can directly point to and say, here we go, this is it?
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at FAQs. I'm not, I'm not digging into the code, but it says, what building types does the stretch energy code and specialized code apply to? The stretch code applies to both residential and commercial new construction, as well as certain renovations and additions. The specialized code applies only to new residential and commercial new construction.
Right, so, so what happens, and this is, again, let me give you another example, like, okay, if, if there's an addition to a building, in our world, that's considered new construction, right? It's an addition, it's hooked on to another building, but it's brand new. The windows are new, the structure is new, everything is new, right? Because it's hooked on to that other building, now does the entire building become subject to the opt-in code? Because in terms of the stretch energy code, I think the answer is yes, right?
Yes, yeah, so, so for the stretch energy code, it automatically would, would get impacted by the stretch code, right? But, but I think what we have to be careful here is not mixing those two up, because the stretch code applies to us regardless. So that problem that you're talking about exists, and that confusion exists. But if this is, and we can get a firm answer that this is new construction that the opt-in code is for, right? Our goal is to make sure that, that we effectively make that a requirement, that at least new buildings, right? That's what we care about first and foremost, do not end up in a position where they're using fossil fuel, or, or if they are using fossil fuels, have a pathway to electric. And, and that's, you know, within their built-in, it's sort of built in during the construction process. That's our primary goal, right? Do we have to go deal with, with our built-up capacity already? Sure, right? But, but let's take this in baby steps. And, and insofar as the stretch code already applies and, and has the confusing parts to it, fine, but, but that's a current problem, right? That, that shouldn't prevent us from adopting a standard for new construction, you know, that, that's higher. That's my point of view, I'm, I'm open to be sort of argued against.
Tricia, is you concerned that the net zero concept is right now not exactly, or hundred percent are applicable to Ashland because we have very heavy on residential and there's a less percentage on commercial? It's, I think this...
But this would still apply to residential, sorry, just to be clear. I, I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
Yeah, new construction residential, right?
New construction, that's right.
You're talking about the existing renovations. I think it's just like, this is on the path, very similar to what LEED was years ago. When LEED started, it was totally new construction. And then now you have so many different wings to that. So I think net zero is, the specialized goal is going towards that. It's not yet there, but it is going towards it. It started with that new construction and the twenty, thirty has now gone further off. But I felt, I feel like it's on the path. Ashland is, I mean, it's probably only for the commercial buildings and the new residential buildings, multifamily that we can really look at, but it feels like it's a long-term plan.
Yeah, I, I mean, I agree, it's just like even with LEED, you know, there's LEED four point O, which...
Which they have to update because it was almost impossible to meet.
It was almost impossible to meet, so then they came out with four point one, and now you can register for four point O and tweak it to take the easier credits in four point one if you want to, because four point O is too hard, right? So those are the things like, and even there's some credits put in there that are completely impossible to make, so, but they're, they're for the future, right? So I'm trying to, that's why this is, it's, that's why a little summary is maybe easy to understand, but the actual code is not, and...
I, I totally agree, and I, I think that the, the one part that I, that I wrestled with is not only the confusion of the codes as, as they are developing, but they are developing in a way that is pretty stringent already, even the stretch code. And there is a certain ease to, for, for, for one to go into, oh, but let's get it better, but let's make it more strict, let's make, and, and that sounds fine, and I've been guilty of that in, in the past, and I've done net zero buildings and commercial buildings and all kinds of different projects. But it's, it's easy to, to, to forget, like a little, an idea that's bigger in terms of what is really sustainability. And, and, and it's easy to obsess with energy consumption and the minutia of the technicalities of how to do it, and then, but the reality of what you were saying is something that concerns me. Are you getting to a point where you make it impossible to have economic sustainability on a town of this size, because it's impossible to build a building to satisfy these things? And then you have to start doing what LEED did and start backing, backing up. So I, I, at this point in time, I have a hard time understanding the urgency of changing even from a stretch code that we don't understand the implications of yet, to something beyond for a date, a net zero date, that is, for the most part, an ambition, which is good, but seems less realistic than understanding the real implications on a town of this size.
So I have a comment, I think to me, it's, it's along the way of the Tree bylaw, like, we have to start pushing out those issues and investigation, and if it's one at a time, like I, the way that Ash explained it this evening, I think it was alleviated some of the concerns I heard from citizens at town meeting and just keep publishing frequently asked questions. And I don't know if you have that availability on the website, Ash, and I know, I mean, it's, people are watching their kid's soccer game and baseball and eating watermelon and ice cream, right? And they're not, but, but we can get there and that, at least as a starting point. And I think particularly, I mean, it appears that a couple people on the board might be some of the biggest skeptics, which means they're good people to work with, right? If they will be transparent about offering, offering that in, in specific small chunks that can be attacked.
Yeah, so the way I was thinking about, so, so again, open for feedback, but the way I was thinking about tackling it, right? This is an attempt to try and summarize. I think I'm hearing loud and clear that we need to get confirmed, sort of the, the confirmation on, on the impact of new versus refurbishment and, and really need some clarity on that. So happy to do some work on, you know, trying to, to further investigate the code and, and try to demystify that a little bit. The, the second piece that, that we heard at town meeting was around cost. And we've consistently heard that some of these houses are more expensive, you know? I have studies that, that I pointed to in town meeting, you know, that was done within Massachusetts, right, around, around scaling up to passive home, which is actually the highest standard, that, that really worked out to about two to four percent. So, you know, I was really trying to focus on, on those. These are real developments in Massachusetts. Yesterday or, or very recently, there's a Boston Globe article that also talks about a new study that came out that criticizes the opt-in code and talks about cost. But even those cost numbers, you know, coming from an industry group, still point to a three to four percent cost increase, not a thirty percent cost increase. And when you actually factor in the incentives that are built in with the code, right, that are available, you know, the, the actual costs do tend to turn out to be lower. But in addition, what's also important to understand is that our big focus is that oftentimes it is the multifamily homes, the larger rental units, where the upfront cost may, may be higher, but for those residents, it's almost impossible to shift the nature of their energy, because it's, it's part of a much bigger unit. And the cost of operating those units goes materially lower when you're going all-electric. I think there's, there's plenty of documentation.
But, but, sorry to interrupt you, but, but to that, to that point, I think Tricia mentioned it before, the, before opting onto anything different, the experience we've had in the last year and a half is that the two or three really large multifamily buildings, rental units that, that have gone through this board have made that commitment without the need of anything different.
Sure.
We've gotten there already. So, so what else do you think we could expect if, if, if what you, if, if they, if they...
So, so here's, here's, here's my point of view. If you're already getting them to sign up for it, then what's the harm of adopting the opt-in code? So that's number one. Number two, right now, it is based on a negotiation that you do and, you know, with the builder and, and, and you kind of hope for the builder to agree, right? And, and certainly you have leverage, but having this as part of the regulations of the town, you know, then, then gets you out of a negotiation and puts you more in the, the role of saying, hey, that's the code.
Well, you, you asked the question, but I, I could, I could ask the question to you in the same way. What is, what is, if we're already getting it, what is the need for it, right? You, you could go, you could do, do it from both sides of, of the argument. The, the difference, the, the, the answer that I would give to your question is, the difference is that a draconian imposition makes things a lot more difficult to achieve when you've already achieved it by, by, by incentive through the approval process.
And that's fair. I, I would like to understand the classification of this being draconian. I, I fully appreciate that the stretch code has created confusion. Is it indeed draconian, right? It, it's easy to classify something as draconian, so, so the challenge I would have for you is just how draconian is it?
Well, on, on that, I, I don't think there's an argument, because the stretch code is the code.
The stretch code is the code, and the opt-in code will be the opt-in code. My, my question simply is going to be, compared to the opt-in code, compared to the stretch code, the step up to the opt-in code, really how draconian is it?
Well, draconian in the way that people could not have any other means to already maybe make a project unfeasible.
Yeah, and, and to be fair, to, for, for all their faults, right? They've actually given us multiple paths, right? So it's not like they've kind of said, this is the only way for you to achieve it. So what I'd love to have is at least the conversation around, do these paths make sense?
And, and I think the conversation, the conversation is, the conversation is perfectly fine. I, I, I think all, all I'm saying is that the conversation should be, in my view, guided towards, do we really need it? And the conversation would be to answer that question, as opposed to, how can we make it happen because we want it in? You know what I mean?
I, I appreciate your point of view, sorry. So, so, so what you're advising me, the, the, the feedback you're giving me is, express clearly the value statement of the opt-in code before we get into the conversation of how do we get it adopted? Is that fair? And, and we might, we might have disagreements on the value statement, but, but let me at least try and put the value statement together.
Then I don't, I can't speak for you, Marcela, if that answers your question.
Well, in, in part, I, I think it's, 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 it could be part of the process. It, it is, is just a matter of understanding the, 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 I, I, I'm, I'm a person that I would like to understand the big rationale first, before I start saying, how can we do it by, by twenty forty? Twenty forty may be the right number, twenty forty may not be the right number, I don't know, but I don't, I don't want to get caught on how do we get it by twenty forty. I want to know what the implications are for the economic stability of the town, what the implications are for the cost, which is, is very costly already to build, and with stretch code is going, is getting worse. I've, I've seen it in all, all our projects, to, to a point that is, that, that you start making projects fall off the cliff, like you said, and not only in residential, in residential too, but commercial projects as well. And, and, and so, so I, I'm, I'm just trying to, 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 to have a more, a, a, a more kind of relaxed conversation on the philosophy of what are we trying to achieve and do we really need that to achieve it? Or maybe we find and have kind of the, 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 the peace of mind to say, maybe we don't need it and be okay with it. I'm okay with both. I just want to make sure that, that we're not starting with a bias toward how can we get it to happen without understanding if it's what we need.
Yeah, thank you. Oh, yeah, please, go ahead.
Have you been paying attention to what's going on in Vermont and in the Southwest and the tornadoes in the Southeast and then outside of Chicago? We're in a crisis here. This isn't, you know, oh, it's not convenient. This is the most serious crisis we've had in the country since World War Two, or maybe worse. I'm sorry, you all know I'm a fanatic about this subject. You've all heard me on it. But, you know, to say, why are we doing this, just seems to me naive, I'm sorry.
Well, no, you, you sound, you sound very committed to it, for sure.
I, I definitely am.
Yes. I don't, I don't know that opting a code to change the construction is going to change how tornadoes form everywhere else in the country, if we do it in Ashland. And, and you can extrapolate from there. I, I, I think that from the planning board point of view, we, some level of idealism is great when you implement it, but, but we are, we, we have a community that has many, many other factors to be successful. And, and, and I, I, I think that you cannot simply ignore that.
Yeah, that's, I, I have less of a, I, I would be interested in knowing of the two projects that we approved, I think both this year or in the past calendar year, that both, that both are all-electric, at least in the residential component, both are, both have solar panels, right? Both need, both will need to meet the new stretch code, because there's no building permit that I know of, right? I would like to know how, how different the opt-in, the opt-in code is to what they already have to do. That would be an interesting real-life comparison, right? This is what they have to do, opt-in code or no opt-in code, and this is what they would have to do if they opt-in code, right? That would be a real, a real comparison.
How can we produce something like that? This is not my area of expertise, Trish.
Well, there's a, the, the approval document is online. Peter can obviously get it, it's for these projects. So, so, but knowing that they have to follow the stretching, the stretch code, right? So now the only difference is the opt-in. And what we have in those approvals, like, did we, did we not specify enough solar and so opt-in would be better? Did we not, you know, not specify enough EV? So I, I don't know, like...
Yeah, no, I understand what you're saying, Trish.
And the other thing...
To do a compare-contrast there.
Yeah, because I, because I, so I have, because I have a less of a problem with that, with these, with the large multifamily, multi-use type of projects. I have less problems with that. I think that's actually more straightforward than all the questions that I think are still out there in the building community about, about, and I keep bringing it up, but about additions. Additions are new construction. It says additions follow something else, but if I'm putting on a four thousand square foot addition, which thing do I now follow? But is it four thousand? What if I put on a thousand square foot addition? Do I not have to do any of that? That's where, what if I'm doing a renovation? You know, those are the things that I think are the smaller energy use things, but the bigger things that affect the actual residents of Ashland and their businesses. And that's, that, those are the things in my scale of work that I'm seeing, you know, I'm working with it all the time now, right? Too much of my time is dedicated to looking at stretch code, actually, and trying to weigh through it. And, and those, so that's the tricky part to me, this, the big stuff is like, yeah, I, I think in, in a way, we're already there, and I kind of agree with both you and Marcela that I think we're probably close to be already there, and it probably doesn't make a lot of difference, like, let's do it or not do it. It's the other stuff, the, the stuff that seems little and it's easy not to look at when you're thinking about these big buildings, and that's the part that I think is still being worked out and confusing, and that's the part that I'm worried about. So, you know, person putting an extra bedroom on their house so that their, so that their parent can move in and not be in a nursing home, or, you know, someone trying to take a, a very old building with no energy efficiency whatsoever and trying to make it into this level of building and be able to open a business. Those are actually real costs for real people in Ashland versus a developer coming in to do a two hundred unit building, right? Those are two different scales, but they all fall under the opt-in code and the stretch code. So that's what, that's where I want the understanding to be. I want the understanding to be, yep, for people building a house at this scale, it's going to be more expensive for you, but we're going to have to bite the bullet anyway, if that's the truth, right? And that's the understanding I, I want, those type of examples. And I'm, I'm trying to work through them as well. I'm not trying to dump it all off on you guys.
Yeah, 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 no. And, and frankly, we will, we will not succeed if you do put it on us, because like you said, like I said earlier, we, we're not the professionals on this, right? We, we've got, we've got passion, idealism, and, and a great deal of education on the topic, but we're not living and breathing this stuff as professionals, right? So, so there's going to be a, a gap there that, that has to be bridged by professionals, right? But, but before I get too far along, Matt, I think you, you wanted to jump in.
Yes, um, just two things, I, I just wanted to acknowledge that here, that there's still a lot of getting used to the new stretch code. So the stretch code, there's a period of, it's quite a change and there's definitely going to be a period where building professionals are adapting to it and learning it. So, um, you know, I think, I think that's kind of something we're up against in this, in, in trying to bring an additional layer on top of that. So I, I, I do hear your point about that. And I did want to just, I, I know there's a lot that we'll learn as people start doing more projects. These studies that have come out have helped to kind of begin to put a price on, on what these, um, the benefits and the costs of these changes are. But, um, I did want to say from, from my standpoint, what I see in the opt-in stretch code at a very high level is that it's trying to steer us towards a path of making new buildings that have the infrastructure to be all-electric. So it is, there is a, a premium for going gas if you're doing a new building under the opt-in code, and it has to be a higher level of efficiency. Um, and you also have to pre-wire for electric and include solar. So I think those things, um, it's, it's helping us to steer more new buildings towards being all-electric, which is the goal. We don't want to build buildings that are fossil fuel-based and do not have wiring because that will just burden the residents with future costs when they're having to upgrade all those systems and, and rip out the old ones. So I think, um, that, at a high level is what we're hoping, I think, the opt-in code would do.
Yeah.
And, I may be wrong in this, but Tricia, but I feel like, um, what I find on my day to day when we have anything to do with passive houses, the cost, the price tag that's attached to projects where you go for the passive house, and I think the stretch code and opt-in, I think the massive differences are where the price tags are is anything to do with passive house. So I think it may be an easier comparison to kind of pull out everything passive house and what is it? Because for all residential, for example, you need to have passive house certification, right? So I think there are like very interesting numbers for passive house, how much is your glass openings, what is the width of the windows, kind of windows that you're putting in. And for residential, I guess that's where all those price tags are, which kind of, I know in commercial world, the moment we say passive house, people love the idea, love the concept, and then moment the price tag comes, they just back out. So I guess that's where, if we dig deeper into that passive house related, this one's for the two projects that you talked about, it may be an easier chart to pull out because they're all electric, right? Ninety percent of the two projects that we had were electric, so that's an easy check off. But I think if you pull out the passive house related concepts, that's possible in opt-in versus the stretch code, that's where you're going to find the differences. So I feel like...
Yeah, just to be clear, the, the passive house is a recommendation or a requirement, right? So if you're meeting passive house, then, then your, your energy rating requirements go down, right? So they've just created that as a pathway. And, and so, a- again, there's more up-to-date studies than the one that I pointed out, you know, of single-family houses. DOR did, did a recent study and I, I have some content that I can share with the, the board that we can publish to the town as well. Of, you know, and I'll just share with you more, not, not to, to get, get a full review of this, right? But, but just more to kind of give you a flavor for the kind of, uh, things that we're looking at. Uh, sorry, one sec. I'll just pull this out. So I'm pulling this straight from, oh, sorry, go. Here we go. This is from the DOR website right now, right? So, uh, they, this is a relatively recent, uh, study, right? It's, it's from, based on the 10th edition 2023, you know, stretch code. And what they've done here is, again, these numbers are going to be a, a little too much to consume in this meeting, but let me just scroll up here, sorry. So how they've kind of summarized this is the residential cost analysis of meeting the base code, of, of meeting HERS 42, which is basically the, the opt-in code versus the base code, uh, really set up around incremental construction cost and the net annual cost for, for basically running the unit effectively for both large single-family and small single-family. So the moving to electric, right? And, and then they've given us a breakdown of, you know, it's not just a made-up number, they've actually given you a breakdown of how to meet the stretch code for the builder, for the home buyer, what's the addition, what's the detraction for a 4,000-square-foot house, including a breakdown for each of, like, this is comparing to the stretch code, but this is for base code versus stretch code, right? Meeting that higher index, you know, what's the differences between them? Is this kind of analysis going to be useful? I don't know how to summarize this kind of analysis for larger public consumption apart from providing the link to a document like this, but, but with something like this sort of makes sense for, for maybe, uh, the, the planning board, for example, to, to answer some questions, to, to, to maybe look through. And, and these are single-family, 4,000-square-foot, large single-family, small single-family, right? They, they've kind of got the breakdown. It's Worcester, not, not, not Boston, um, you know? And, and again, not a study I did, but, but a study that Department of Energy Resources is doing. Is this, is this sort of what you had in mind?
I'm trying to read some of the numbers as they fly by.
Yeah, yeah, let me see if I...
But like, for instance, I mean, I'm just not sure I understand the numbers, like wall insulation says R21, and maybe that's if you're going through the HERS rating, you can use an R21 because right now the code is R30. Ceiling insulation says R49, that code is R60 right now under the new stretch code. So I, I'm not sure, I, I'm not sure what these numbers are, I'm not sure what these numbers mean, um...
Let me send you the document and maybe you can help me translate it because, again, I will be limited in my ability to translate it for you, right?
Okay.
I, I don't know what mechanical ventilation means. I, I'll be candid, right? I, I, I can just show you sort of, here's the study, here's, like, I understand the top-level number, but, but what goes into it? I need someone to translate it for me as well, right? I'm, I'm looking for help too.
Yeah, so it's, it's kind of just about, yeah, like I said, about understanding this. I, I think, I think the important thing to understand here, and, and, and I, what I went, you know, Chuck to understand too, because I know he's very passionate about this, that no one on this committee, and I bet I can speak for Anna as well, but no one on this committee, um, feels, uh, that, that isn't concerned about climate change or concerned about the things that are happening or, you know, and wants to do the right thing here. No one's going to be in that group of disbelievers, right? But I, I think when, uh, it, the reality of some of these things, no matter what comes up on the screen or what examples are found online, when you are the one, when Marcelo is the one working on an actual building and trying to get to meet these levels, when I am working with Ashland homeowners and trying to meet these new levels, it is hard. It is hard and it is expensive for them, right? And that's my reality that I'm in every day, right? So, um, so I'm trying to balance that with, you know, with, with everything, and that's kind of our job, is to make sure we're balancing not just climate change, but affordable housing and, um, housing in general and, um, you know, being able to have families together. There's just, there's just a lot of things that we need to balance and it doesn't come together in one nice neat package. And that's what I'm struggling with right now, with, with these two sides, these two sides of things. So I want you to understand that we're not against, in fact, we're very much for this stuff, anyone can jump in and protest, but at what cost? At what, like, what, what else are we screwing up by doing this other thing that is really, really good? And that's what I'm, um, that's what I'm having an issue with.
So Tricia, trying to understand the, the point that Marcelo was making, if we have the Department of Energy Resources saying, we've done the study, here's a real example of a house in Worcester that's built to these specs, and these are the numbers that came up, including the, the, the incentives that are out there, why are we then finding that when we try to use the same things in Ashland, the cost is much higher? Are we doing something different or is the DOR lying to us?
Because, because that's one house of a particular design, of a particular orientation, of a particular amount of windows, of, it's, it's one house. Every house I do is different, right? So if we were doing a cookie cutter house to that standard, then, then yes, I think we could do it for everybody, but that's not the housing stock here, that we're basically built out. We, we're not building new construction of these little houses, right? We're dealing with the stuff we already have and trying to retrofit them and put an addition on them. So it's, it's, I, I'm not, I'm not saying their numbers are false at all. I'm, I'm a little, like I said, confused about the, the R-values they were putting in, but...
Sure, let me get you, let me, let me send this to you, so let's make sure that we interpret, but they actually looked at 900 unique scenarios, right? So this is the, the, the larger graphic that they presented, right? So that's where I'm trying to understand, so I'm not trying to throw numbers at you. What I'm trying to genuinely understand is, when I hear that the cost is much higher than what some of these started, where is the fit gap? That's, what are we missing, right?
But maybe the cost, maybe, listen, but wait, Ash, maybe the cost isn't much higher, but after the, you know, after the, the rate hikes and after, um, you know, whatever's happening in people's lives, right? What I'm finding is that people are already having to step back on what they hope to do, and now they have to step back even more because they need to meet the new stretch code, right? So I'm just saying that these scenarios are that, are, are that, they're scenarios, they don't fit everything and they're averages, right? They put together, I'm sure not all 900 of those houses came out, you know, glorious, right? It's an average, so...
Yeah, I mean, there, there's a spread there, sure.
You know, otherwise, great, tell me what they're doing, I'll apply it to every project.
Yeah, and that's, that's what I'm trying to figure out, like, what are they doing? That's so different.
And that's what I'm just talking about, being realistic. I'm talking about that.
Yeah.
I, I think realistic, I think real, realistically, things like the old stretch code, the new stretch code, the opt-in code have pluses and they have minuses. And it's important to think about those realistically and not deny one in favor of the other. That's all I'm saying, right? And so I'd rather be honest about that. And then let's make a choice based on an honest, the, the, about what's going on, right?
I, I, I can't disagree with that. That, that, that's a very valid point of view. And, 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 you know, a- as you can tell, I think regardless of passion, right? We, we are trying to engage in a, in an honest conversation as well, right? The, the reality is, we're facing the climate challenge, yes. The reality is that, that economics matter and which is why I'm trying to kind of come up with the economic value of these things as well and not just looking at it from a climate perspective. And, and, and I'm honestly trying to understand sort of what are the puts and gets, right? So that we can make wise decisions for the town. That, that's really, I think, in all our best interests. So, all right, look, look, let me get some of this material out to you, at least so you have a chance to consume it. I, I think, Peter, we, we, we'll probably need to continue this con- conversation a little bit. Let me get you the content that I was sharing earlier as well, so you have a chance to sort of consume that a little bit, look at the executive summary, and then maybe I can get feedback from you guys on, you know, what would you like to maybe poke at next? How can we support that discussion, right? And, and then, then see if we can arrive at a point of view that says, okay, this is the right thing to do or not the right thing to do.
Yeah, I, I think for me, it's about really looking at some real-life examples, not just kind of, not reading them off the chart, but saying, okay, what if it's a project like this? What does, how do I follow the code through? Not the summary of the code, but the actual code to understand what would happen with that project. And, and, and that's, that's where I'm talking about having a real idea of understanding about, about what this is doing and, and then being able to decide, yep, it's okay, it, it, it's working, there's some downsides, but we can deal with it. Or, boy, it's, it's really a little tougher than maybe what they made it out to me. That, that's where I want to be.
So Peter, if you look at the, the, the couple of projects that we were suggesting that have gone through recently and tried to do a fit gap, eh, would I be working with you or is there someone on the planning board that I ought to be working with to try and do that comparison? Because I can't do it alone.
Yeah, I'm happy to, I'm happy to work through it with you. I mean, I can, I can call in anyone else if, if, if more support is needed, but...
Yeah, let, just to get the analysis done, there's no decision-making there and then we can present that analysis back to this group. Yep, that makes sense to me.
Okay.
Awesome. All right, I think that's...
If, if I can just say, I, I just want to...
Please jump in, yeah.
Yeah, I, I just want to thank you and, and your committee for, for a, a great discussion. And as I said before, I, I think as we work through these things more and more, um, having more consistent discussions is more important than trying to get something done in one.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I, I agree, let's argue it out and find the right answer. That, that's what I'm looking forward to, you know?
Totally, totally. I'm, I'm willing to dedicate a, a substantial portion of, and, and again, I'm speaking for the committee, but I think we're all sort of aligned that some of these things are important, that, that we'll put the effort in. And, you know, I was just looking for, how do we engage? What's the most ideal way, effective way to engage so that we're not having side, sideways, you know, having conversations go sideways? Um, so I, I personally found this conversation super valuable. I, I really appreciate, uh, everyone on the planning board sort of jumping in and, and providing feedback, uh, challenging us, um, and hopefully you saw us doing the same thing, and I look forward to continuing to collaborate with you.
Yep, well, I am maybe unfortunately here the rest of the summer, but I, it should be easy to find.
I'm around for most of it as well, so I'll reach out to you, Trish, and we can, we can, we can figure out.
All right, sounds good. Thanks, Ash, and thank you to the Sustainability Committee.
All right.
All right, that's a, boy, it's a detailed discussion, it's detailed text. Yeah, so step by step, we'll, we'll get there.
All right, we're going to drop off, guys, I'm going to let you guys continue.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks again for having us on.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Okay, so the rest of our formal stuff is really, um, just, uh, updates from Peter. Before we actually do the updates, why don't we just take care of the, um, meeting minutes and just get that taken care of so we don't have it hanging at the end? So these are meeting minutes of May 11th, they're just a few pages on in your book. Let's see what happened. Oh, this is the meeting where we basically approved all the candidates, um, for the comprehensive plan. So, yeah, groups, groups, groups of candidates, um, and then we talked about 10 to 16, oh, sorry, 9 to 49. Peter, I had one comment on this. Did you find the, um, what was the... My question was, was it...
It was the date that we sent the 9 to 49 Homer Street to the Design Review Committee, and it falls under, uh, line 128, and I went back in the meeting and I did double-check.
Okay, so we did send it on at this meeting?
We did, we all did, we all took a turn, we all discussed it.
Okay.
Uh, and, and I corrected and I confirmed that.
Okay, thank you. And then 10 to 60 main, it was the one where they had, um, updated drawings, but...
What was the last time we saw them?
I think it was the very last time.
Because then they continued, right? Yeah.
Yeah, and, and that was the one where I had showed the different examples of buildings?
Yes, that was the last time, yep.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of May 11th meeting, uh, as presented.
A second.
And a roll call vote?
Debo and Kedai.
Marcelo and Ana, aye.
Catherine and Jerzek, aye.
And Tricia can die, so those are passed. Now we can go back and, um, yeah, so basically, uh, since we had a little time, um, I just thought, just to make sure, as we go through this kind of summer slower pace, that we just know where the projects are that are still out there. So, Peter, I am going to turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you so much. So just to run through, uh, on some updates, and, uh, so right now we have three, uh, live cases, uh, and the first one is, uh, 16 Union Street, which is a definitive subdivision, uh, and that is the area of the Fafford Land, uh, which is, uh, kind of a buddy in the new public safety building. So this was continued, uh, and we'll come back on our next meeting on August 10th. Just to give to, a note, uh, GCG Associates, our peer review, did submit a letter, a peer review letter. That letter was shared with the applicant. At this point, they have not submitted any new material, uh, back to us and/or response for the, to the GCG letter.
And that was a letter, we already got the letter from GCG, right?
Correct.
But there has been no response back from the applicant.
Correct.
Did the board ever receive that? I, I don't, I think we asked and we were going to get that just so we can kind of keep...
I can double-check, but I can, I...
I don't remember seeing that.
I'm happy to reshare it and I'll take care of that, you know, right off the bat. Number two is 9 to 49 Homer Street. This, uh, project is meeting, has met once with the Design Review Committee. The Design Review Committee, uh, sent... The Design Review Committee sent a report that was shared with the board. Uh, and now the application team is scheduled to re-present and or go back to the Design Review Committee on their July twentieth meeting. And so a week from tonight, uh, nine to forty-nine Homer Street will reappear to the Design Review Committee. This project is scheduled to be back in front of the planning board on our next meeting, which is August tenth. And I think just to note, everyone knows our next meeting is canceled, which is the second meeting in June.
July.
Sorry, July. They're flying by.
No, and prior to that, just because we talked about Kevin Moat earlier in the, earlier in the meeting, we should make sure that he has gone to the town clerk and officially.
Correct.
Kind of, I think, because I think he needs to do.
So he needs to get sworn in. So we'll follow up, obviously, everyone knows Kevin's on vacation this week. But hopefully when Kevin gets back next week, uh, he can get sworn in and then he can be an active member on the Design Review Committee.
Okay.
So it was important to do that tonight, um, in that gap, I would say. The last project is ten to sixty Main Street. Um, obviously, this, uh, we just approved the minutes the last time they, they appeared in front of our board. They did continue until August tenth. Uh, from our last meeting, the email from March first was added to the, to the planning board website. And also the two continuances were all added to the planning board website. And so that material is there, and, uh, at this point, uh, we have not received any update since.
So, so we don't know what the status is, um, in terms of any progress, or?
I as, I assume they're working as an application team. Uh, I did send along the traffic letter, which was received, but I have not received any update on what they plan to re-present to the planning board.
Yeah, because traffic, I remember, was the last big discussion on the traffic update, right?
Yep, the butters, and then we received the email on, uh, June twenty-eighth, right before our last planning board meeting. As I went on vacation, that letter was sent off to the application team and the, uh, resident of Ashland was responded to. So I, I, I got confirmation that, from the attorney, um, Joe Antonalis, Attorney Antonalis, that he did receive the letter and that they are going to build it into their reply.
And, and there's no schedule or time concern on all these continuances?
No, because they, everything, everything was continued out.
So there's no?
There's no thing. The, 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 the Union Street and the Homer Street, um, they are, um, right now, we have extended everything out with a, a, um, decision deadline of August thirty-first. Um, and obviously that can get continued out as long as there's a continuance from the applicant.
Those are, sorry, that was for Union and Homer, those two are?
All three of them, yes, Union, Homer, and ten to sixty Main Street.
Okay, ten to sixty Main as well?
Yep. So that's, that's kind of where all three product kind of projects stand.
Can I ask you about another one?
Sure.
Um, we, uh, I don't know if we discussed it, but I, I, I was wondering, what is the status of progress? Uh, I'm just curious on five oh one Pond Street. Do we have a report on that one? Because the.
It's on.
Yes, on that, we kind of put it in a different section.
Oh, okay.
It's in a different section.
Oh, sorry, maybe I just.
I'm happy to jump in the gun.
Nope, that's okay.
So moving on to, now, item seven, it says reports on the planning topics. Um, number one is scenic roads. Um, I do want to report that at this time, Anna has volunteered to start together a list of trees that are being removed along scenic roads. And also, I think to that, we're gonna talk, we're gonna add the size of the trees that are being removed and also the specimen of trees are being removed, along with the location. So Anna, and, and, you know, obviously Anna is out, but, you know, I think we're gonna start to kind of take some, some, um, put together a document list of, of what has been removed. And I actually have everything kind of in my documents within the scenic roads that we can kind of go back and retrace, at least for the last, you know, three to four years. Um, so that shouldn't be that big, a bigger, big. I do just want to make a note that Eversource is doing some tree trimming, um, that was approved by the planning board. Um, and so they are out there in the areas, uh, and they are staying in contact with us, the planning board, the DPW, um, fire, and the police departments.
I just want to add to that, that, um, along with the, the list that, the spreadsheet that Anna's developing, uh, we're talking to, to, to get like a base budget for, you know, what does it cost to, um, what's the term, to do, the stump, like, deal with the stump?
Stump removal.
Stump removal, what does, because, because we know that's not in DPW's budget. What does it cost to buy a certain caliper tree? You know, what does it cost to buy one? What does it cost to plant it? What does it cost to maintain it, if anything? So that we can kind of say, okay, putting up a new tree is gonna be three to five thousand dollars per tree, you know, in, in a ballpark. So we really know what kind of a budget maybe we might be looking for in terms of scenic road trees? Because right now we don't know what that number is, we know that DPW doesn't have that money. But, so we can start looking for, how much money do we even need? And then where might it come from? Whether we work with the select board or the tree bylaw, or, you know, is there some kind of funding source for that, so.
When you say we, you mean as in planning board, we're doing this?
Doing the research, yeah, doing the research, as part of the scenic roads, so.
And I, you know, I'm reaching out with Roy Carrera, our DPW, to figure out, okay, how much do they pay per tree? What's going on? I know, um, and kind of just to understand the mechanisms of how they do tree removal, you know? Are they, are they scheduling the tree company, you know, one day? How much does it cost from their contract? Is it by the tree? Is it by the diameter of the tree? Kind of how is their contracts built that we could try to back in some numbers? You know, and then obviously with an estimate ballpark to say, okay, stump removal, is it between three and five hundred dollars per stump? Just to kind of get a base understanding of kind of what to expect, so we can try to forecast. I think what Trish is talking about is how much could we budget in? Or how much do we budget for trees, uh, from a calendar year? Moving forward, I want to make a note that Alvaro has worked very hard. Uh, and he's put together, um, uh, as requested, uh, a website, well, uh, a link to our website and or part of our website for MBTA communities. And so here he has printed out a draft of the MBTA community website that we would like to launch. Um, so, um, if the planning board would want to review this and, and come back with any, and or send Alvaro and I any edits to the, to the, um, to the draft website that Alvaro has put together. We greatly appreciate it. But, um, Alvaro tries to summarize what the MBTA communities are, um, how it affects Ashland, obviously with the numbers. And then we're gonna link, um, all elements of the documents, um, that we have proposed and or presented to the planning board, to the website.
Is this visible online?
So right now, no.
Or this is just a paper draft?
So this is just a paper draft, so right now it is, it's a, it's in draft form and it has to be published. And so Alvaro, um, has to pub, you know, once we kind of, I always wanted to present it to the board. And if you guys say, go ahead, let's publish it, we can publish it. And if you guys want to, if we can publish it, and then we all can take a look and click around on it and then kind of provide some feedback, we could also do that as well. But since, you know, he was working on it this week, uh, and we were meeting, I thought it would be a good opportunity just to kind of, you know, show, give, get everyone a printed-out copy and, and get some feedback before we kind of hit the publish button, so. But that has been, um, Alvaro's been, you know, working hard to create this kind of page.
Uh, I'd like to see it published, because I think some of it is gonna be visual to a feedback about, to make it user-friendly. And we've had citizens already talk about it as well, so the sooner we can get it up, the better.
Okay. So we'll publish it and, um, and then we'll send everyone a link and everyone can kind of take a click around on it and give us any feedback.
Yeah, sounds good.
So moving on to item number eight, says reports from planning board members and the town planner. Kate, do you want to start off with the comprehensive plan? Is, is there any update? I can.
I think you probably know more than I do.
So I only.
You're gonna make Peter keep talking? He's got a long list.
As, as, as I'm trying to land the plane, uh, no. Uh, so I can give you two quick updates. Number one, the town has contracted with the consultant, uh, JM Golson, um, Golson. And so that what did happen, and so we have a signed contract with Golson as the planning board voted unanimously, excuse me, unanimously with the select board, um, a little, you know, a couple of weeks ago at this point. So I think that's a good start. Um, we do have a comprehensive plan meeting a week from tonight. Um, and that will take place at the library, which is open to the public if anybody is interested. And it'll also be broadcast via Zoom, uh, hybrid. But with that said, um, Golson is contracted and they're actually gonna come to our September meeting. They're finishing up some projects, and so July and August, in July and August. So, um, Golson, our consultant, will be kind of hitting the ground running in September. Did I miss anything, Kate? Okay.
I just actually wanted to comment so that all members of the planning board know that we as individuals are free to go to the, a meeting of another board. Um, we just, any, any discussion we have to, has to take place in public. Like, right, we can't talk amongst ourselves at the meeting, but we're, we're able to go and participate as long as that participation is public participation. So, in case we're interested in what's going on. It is an exciting time.
Um, that's a good point, just about, um, the particular consultant that was selected. I think you heard, right, she said whoever comes. And there might be a particular topic, right, that you can give more time or more interest in. And I think we have to just kind of start publicizing that more when we, when we get there. And that maybe topics may be the way to get more people involved, right?
So we have, uh, the reports from the Design Review Committee, Sustainability Committee, CPC. I'm gonna skip over those. Do you have any updates from the CPA? CPC? No? Okay. Uh, moving on to number nine, administrative matters. Number one, the planning office updates. Number one, Whitmore Estates, definitive subdivision. We have filed, obviously, at the last meeting, we did vote to send the letter off. I can tell you, the vote happened on Thursday and on Friday, we sent via certified mail the, the letter off to the applicant. Um, and so, uh, talked to the town attorney today. They were, he had a conversation with their attorney. However, that forty-five day clock is ticking and right now it's kind of in that, that time. What am I trying to say? Uh, it's, it's just kind of in that process. And, and our attorney's working with us and, and we're all kind of, we're all kind of, as a team, obviously, hopefully come to the, to a, a good solution on that. Moving forward.
Can I just say, when twelve, when you get to twelve pond, let me leave, because I have to recuse for items on twelve pond, because I'm in a butter.
It's an updated by the sidewalk.
No, I mean, they're pretty, as in a butter, I think you're just supposed to be recused.
Yeah, I don't think we're voting on anything, so.
Number two says, uh, ten to thirty, excuse me, uh, hundred to a hundred thirty Chestnut Street, Village of Americas. This is the, uh, large project that we voted, uh, around December. This is the hundred and seventy-four unit, ten and a half thousand square feet of commercial. And if you drive down Chestnut Street, you can see that there's a lot of work going on. We had a pre-construction meeting, uh, this past Tuesday. Um, prior to that, leading up to the week of the Fourth of July, demolition took place on the two existing Fafford, uh, buildings that were date back to two thousand, excuse me, uh, two thousand and eight. Um, and so work is progressing and they are moving forward this week. They're gonna start digging, um, they're gonna start digging and implementing some of the stormwater. They're doing some, um, soil boring testing. Um, those are obviously gonna be sent over to us and we'll send those to GCG just for, you know, to check, to make sure that the gravel is good for, uh, um, all, all acceptable plans. Um, and then they're gonna move forward with foundations. And so they're moving fairly swiftly, and so they're hitting the ground running. And, uh, they do have building permits, um, I can say that, uh, and they've, uh, they're working great. So they've complied with all the planning board, um, uh, special conditions. And, uh, they're hitting the ground running. So that's a project that will be moving forward and, and I'll update as progress moves. So next week I'm gonna try to go on a site visit. And if anybody's in town or, you know, would like to try to make it out to a site visit, I'm happy to kind of, um, organize that. But at this point, I think it's, they're still moving a lot of dirt around, um, as one can see. Five oh one Pond Street, I can state that, um, my, my update's minimal. Uh, I think the owner of the site, uh, right now construction hasn't started. Um, the owner of the site, I believe, and I haven't had too many updates from them, but I've been, I've been reached out by a, a party that may be purchasing that property. Um, but that wouldn't take place until next year, calendar year. Um, and so right now that project is still, it's sitting there. Um, the, the permits are still good. Um, obviously the site needs to be secured by the owner, which would be Trust Development. But at this point, that's the update, that's, there's, that's the update I have.
So can we say that the site is secure? I've driven by it a couple of times. Not, not sure, maybe I missed it. Didn't seem to be all fence and all sides, so there's, there's some, there's some action on some of the edges, but.
You know, and when I say the site is secure, I know they've put up erosion controls.
Yeah.
The erosion controls have been checked. Um, my biggest concerns are dust. Right now there's really no construction equipment out there. There's no building permit yet issued, and so fences, you know, and, and, you know, comes out of a building.
But there's a lot of exposed dirt.
There's a lot of exposed dirt.
With water and, and wind, I mean, if it's gonna be for a year, I just wonder what's gonna.
So, yeah, so I think, you know, if there is an issue with dust, obviously I'll, you know, we'll reach out to them and, and make sure that happens, and, and I have that, I have done that. But, um, I haven't heard any reports and there are concerns about dust, uh, in the site and the condition it's in. Also, please, you know, also realizing there's a full construction going on at one twenty, you know, along one twenty-six. So some of that equipment is tied to the, and some of that dirt is actually tied to the Mass DOT project. So that whole area is kind of under construction.
Um, I have a question too. So five oh one pond, there were trees removed and I, a butters had sent in.
Mm-hmm.
And did we determine that that was, um, okay to do? And, and now that it's delayed on construction, like, that, that's sort of an impact to.
So I can tell you that the applicant, um, has reached out to that person, uh, and has responded, uh, fully.
So there's, um, that, that project's compliant as it cut down the trees and there's no issue?
So the, the plans were to, you know, looking at the plans, they are there and they do have plans. Then some of the infrastructure does come through that way, I would say. And, and so that was looked at, and I believe the, and I do know, um, that the owner of the site, um, did reply to that citizen.
Because I think some of those trees were always coming out and there was a couple that were being maintained. And I think that was what needed to be responded to, right? Because there were a couple that were supposed to, I don't remember if it was one or two, that did say to remain, that were taken out because of.
Well, they have to pull the infrastructure in, yeah.
So now that there's a delay, I mean, that, there's nothing that is gonna, I mean, goes back to tree bylaws, unfortunately, right? We, we don't have good control over that, but that's another example that's not great for anyone.
Why were the trees removed if the construction was not going forward for that?
I don't have the answer to that.
And, and what happened if there's a further delay? Who's gonna put them back, right?
Yeah.
I have made it very strong to both the current owner and to any future owner that those trees are the most important thing right now on that site. And the health of those trees are the most important thing on that site.
You mean the ones that are still there versus the ones that are already gone?
Mm-hmm.
So, so we don't know what's gonna happen to the ones that are gone and being replaced or when?
Well, those will be replaced when the landscape, when the infrastructure gets built in, um, but, yeah.
Okay.
Just gets added to a spreadsheet.
Moving on, number four, uh, three ninety-nine Union Street, Starbucks. Uh, we did have a pre-constru, uh, pre-construction meeting for this project. Uh, actually today I received the last, um, Eversource gas, um, excuse me, shut, shut-off letter, um, which was submitted to our building department, which therefore triggers the, the, the release of the demo permit. It was the affidavit that has to come in from Eversource because they shut the gas off.
I mean, there's heavy equipment already parked there.
There is.
So they're gonna start next week?
They're gonna start very shortly.
Okay.
You know, the construction fence is up, they've already met with all the town officials. The demo permit will be issued, uh, if it hasn't already. But, um, obviously when you demo a building, you have to cut off the services, electrical, gas, water. Um, number one thing is the last letter they were waiting for was Eversource and gas. And so that did come in, there was a little bit of a. Number one thing is, the last letter they were waiting for was Eversource and gas. And so that did come in, there was a little bit of a, I think everyone knows, probably, um, last week was a tough week with vacations. So that, that was received this week, and the, the demo permit will be issued, but we were kind of in a holding pattern until that letter was received. So demo will take place, and I think they're probably looking at a, uh, they're, they're looking to get started right away with tearing down that building and then moving forward.
And, uh, do we have a schedule of completion for, for, for that project, or not?
For full completion, I don't wanna, I, I do not have a full completion schedule, because the contractor, the contractor right now that's gonna move in is there to build the building. And then once the building shell is erected, then it gets over to Starbucks. Then Starbucks has another contractor coming in, and then they outfit the internal side, you know, the internal, I don't wanna say guts, but the internal guts of the building, and the interiors of the building. And so, there's, the, there's a second contractor that's gonna come in after the contractor that is actually gonna build the shell. And so to give a timeline, uh, right now, I'm gonna say twelve months. Not twelve months, I, I think you're gonna see, most likely, spring of, of twenty-four. You have to remember, I'm on TV, I won't give all the secrets away, Marcelo.
Before we do twelve Pond Street, which I know Kate doesn't wanna be here for, is there anything else that anyone has?
Yeah, we, we had, we've been trying to coordinate a meeting with the Select Board, which I think is really important, over particularly the MBTA communities, and it was also related to the moratorium. Any movement on that?
Yeah, I reached out to Rob about that when I got back from vacation, and he was, you know, I, I assume because of the Select Board schedule and vacations there, that he was looking at end of July, beginning of August. That would be something that they could do. So, um, that's all the information I have about it so far, so. I think, yeah, I guess you could... It's true, 'cause we can adjourn with three.
Yeah. Okay.
We'll be right behind you.
All right.
So just for the twelve Pond Street, I just wanna, uh, state that, uh, about a week ago, or prior to my, prior to the July fourth kinda week, I did meet with DPW and Mass DOT, and, um, we met to go, to go over the sidewalks, and it was a good conversation. So there was a little bit of a tweak that Mass DOT has to do on their plans regarding one of the handicap ramps. And so they're trying to do the redesign to kinda tweak it, and then they're gonna come back and put that in, and then that will allow the, the front facade of twelve Pond Street to be finished.
The front facade?
Excuse me, the front facade of the sidewalk
The sidewalk, okay.
of the, that edge leading into the building. So right now, it's kind of, that whole process was, you know, the building's up, you know, all units are, um, all units are, are occupied. We went through the paperwork to add those to the, to the SHI, to the shared housing inventory. But that sidewalk has been kind of in flux, you know, working with the Mass DOT project. So hopefully, we'll see an end to that, you know, fairly soon. Uh, but I just wanted to give everyone an update that I did meet with Mass DOT out there, and they're kinda currently working through that, that, that process.
Two questions on that. One, do they, is there a tenant, or tenant, or tenants for the commercial spaces?
There, there was, there was, and I think, I don't know where that stands right now.
Probably hard with that, all the work going on right there.
Yeah, one would assume that it's probably, yeah.
And the second one is that there were some concerns if the different parts of the landscaping on the approved landscape plan about pocket parks, benches, the things that are shown on the drawings. Did you, have those been checked, that they're there, or they're not there, or?
So I have been, I, when I went out there, I, I had the plans, you know, on, in the rear of the property, it looks like all the plantings are in. It's just along around that front, and I think number one is, you know, to get the sidewalk in, implemented, and then it'll allow the developer to kind of finish up, you know, any landscaping in the front and on those two sides. That cur, that, 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 you know, wrapping around the building, curbing has to go in. And so obviously, the landscaping will come after the curbing and the sidewalk.
And that needs to can be complete before the full occupancy permit?
Correct, before any occupancy granted for that, those rear commercial, I mean, those basement commercial buildings.
Okay.
Obviously, that, that landscaping plan as approval being enforced.
Okay.
And...
And were there supposed to be trees in front of that? Or are they, I thought?
Off the top of my head, I, I would have to go back to the original plan.
Okay.
The approved plan.
Because that, uh, that's something, too, I mean, it was, I don't...
There was green.
Yeah, so I don't know if there's confusion between...
There was planted box, there was either planted boxes in or trees, but there was some sort of, I remember, you know, we talked about breaking up that mass, that scale of the building with some vegetation.
Well, I'm trying to remember if they were Mass DOT trees, like on there? They had that, or if the, if the applicant was showing trees, and so they need to take care of the trees? You know, I don't, don't remember where, where that landed, you know what I mean?
That's something I'll, I'll double back and take a look at.
Okay. Like, part of, as part of the landscaping that they're, you know, that, what they said was gonna be done is done, I guess.
Yeah, no, it's, I understand, um, that was the first project I had to permit here in Ashland, so I think, uh, yes, no, I agree. It's, it's good to get it moving forward. And with that said, I don't have any more updates, unless any Planning Board members have questions.
I don't either. Ben, I will make a motion to adjourn at nine fourteen.
Second.
Roll call vote?
Debo and Day.
Marcelo Hona, aye.
And Tricia Kendai. We are adjourned.